I was like, "Oh shoot, he's gonna be here on time." Yeah, I can...
Nice.
Hey, baby. Somebody in the back room. Hi, gosh. Just tell him we came here for him. We came here for you here.
Is this the intro?
Yeah. It was James' old...
Oh, really?
Yes.
So, gotta call Professor.
Yeah, that's right.
Standing up here making a mischief.
What? One more minute. One more minute. One more minute.
Welcome, everyone. Before we call the meeting to order, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Ron Fitzwater, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
And the Father, thank you for this opportunity to get together again with leaders of our community, who protect this community and folks who are involved. Pray that you would continue to do what the folks who have been impacted by recent events or damage to our community, flooding, that hopefully is going back, but it still continues to impact the folks who are probably to be attending. We thank you for the folks involved here, the opportunity to celebrate something tonight that they've been hugely involved in in our activities over the last year. We pray for our public service, all that they have done, working with us, and pray for our military, men and women standing across the globe, and they continue to protect our opportunity to meet in a free assembly as we are tonight. We pray you do for all that are in the room, and we want you to be a part of it.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. I'll now call to order the Monday, June 17th, 2019 City Council Meeting. Mrs. Donaldson, roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kenner.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Frether.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Item three is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Item four miscellaneous agenda items. We have our recognition for the June Outstanding Employee Service Award recipient, Mr. Steve Crow.
Actually, I think we're doing this one for May, just because we got off schedule. Does it say June on there?
It says June, but May's fine.
Okay, all right, that's fine. I will ask Sergeant, Officer St. Ange to come forward, please, and Chief Schrader to come forward, please. Yes.
Stand between. That's a good idea.
A little hesitant, but I think I'll also say Officer St. Ange has a fan club here, shall we say? I think I'm just gonna leave it at that. Should they stand and introduce themselves? Do we have it on the record? Okay, all right, last chance. Congratulations to Charlie St. Ange, City of Jefferson Police Officer, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award, I'll say for June 2019. The recognition is not only for the specific examples referenced in the nomination form, but also in recognition of the service Officer St. Ange provides to the citizens of the City of Jefferson on an ongoing basis. Some of the information paraphrased from the nomination form include the following. Officer St. Ange began his employment with the city as a communications operator responding to 911 calls for service and coordinating emergency responses. In March 2015, Officer St. Ange was assigned as a police officer to the Police Department Patrol Section, also serving as a member of the Jefferson City Police Department Crisis Negotiation Team. Officer St. Ange always displays a positive attitude and helpful spirit. Officer St. Ange is courteous, friendly, and maintains a sense of humor even during difficult situations. Officer St. Ange operates with a high level of professionalism and technical expertise. Officer St. Ange has pride in the city and the police department. As an example of Officer St. Ange's professionalism, on June 14th, 2019, he was conducting his patrol duties, and while driving past City Hall, noticed the American flag had become detached from the flagpole and was lying on the ground. Officer St. Ange immediately pulled over his vehicle and retrieved the flag. Officer St. Ange accepts new challenges with enthusiasm. Officer St. Ange's significant contribution to the overall quality of life of the City of Jefferson are recognized and appreciated. So congratulations and thanks to Sergeant, to Charlie, to Charlie St. Ange, City of Jefferson Police Officer, for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for June 2019. Welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations. We are so proud of you, Officer St. Ange, and that same respect that you had for the flag and taking the time to do that is exactly how you are with all of your duties, and our community members are so fortunate to have you on our team, and we're very, very proud of you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So would you like to introduce some of your family?
I really don't know. I really don't know if I'd like to. You've got quite a cheering section here tonight. Yeah. So my wife, Lauren, my mom, Kelly, my sister Cassie, my brother-in-law, James, my sister Emma, and my work mom, Lynn, and her two kids, Christopher and Erica.
And the dog.
And the dog, and where, oh, and my stepdad over there, Dave.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Well, congratulations. I'd like to present to you a city coin for your service, and if you'd come forward, we'll get a photo.
Yeah, cha-cha. Maddie's a fan, too.
All right, get your hands in the air. I don't know.
Sorry. Yeah, it's gonna have to go this way. Okay.
Thanks. All right, congratulations again.
So item B, we have St. Louis Blues Hockey Proclamation presentation. So we're very excited. It's really nice to have something to celebrate here in Jefferson City and in the state of Missouri. So we are very proud of our Blues, so we have a special proclamation. And it reads, "Whereas the City of Jefferson is celebrating 'Wear Blue Days' in honor of the Stanley Cup Champions, St. Louis Blues." Woo! And whereas the City of Jefferson, capital city of Missouri, is proud of the St. Louis Blues and supports our Missouri team by bringing the Stanley Cup to Missouri, hashtag LGB, hashtag Let's Go Blues, hashtag Play Gloria, hashtag Stanley Cup. And whereas Jefferson City already wears blue to support and cheer on our Lincoln University Blue Tigers and the Kansas City Royals. And whereas the USS Missouri and the USS Jefferson City help us by cheering on our St. Louis Blues. And whereas the St. Louis Blues have been an inspiration, they fought and never gave up on their journey from last to champions. And whereas Jefferson City will be singing Gloria and cheer Let's Go Blues. Now therefore I, Kerry Turgeon, Mayor of the City of Jefferson, congratulate the Stanley Cup Champions, the St. Louis Blues, and declare Let's Go Blues Day on Monday, June 17th, in honor of their victory on June 12th, 2019. And we are going to, what do you do when the Blues win? You play Gloria. So we are gonna play Gloria, and we invite everyone to get on their feet, as Ryan brings the mic. I think we're gonna...
That was a close one.
So I mean, everybody up here and everyone down there, we're gonna play Gloria, aren't we?
I think we are.
We really are, like, we really are. There it is. That's okay, we have, we've got some excitement here. Is that as loud as it goes? Is it up? I mean, like, turn it up. That's good, okay. Y'all can hear it? Okay. All right, everybody, on your feet. Gloria, okay. You're always on the run now, running after somebody. Do I have to sing this? Can anybody help me out here? You gotta get 'em somehow. All right, woo! I can't hear it.
So be careful not to show it. Everybody on your feet. And you really don't remember. Is it something that they said? I better not be the only one singing. Or the voices in your head. Come on, council, singing Gloria. Everybody on your feet. Gloria. I think they got your number. Here you go. I think they got the alias that you've been living under.
Now, where is it? There it is.
Leave 'em hanging on the line, calling Gloria.
All right, everybody on your feet. I'm not, the mayor's not the only one. We're playing Gloria in Jefferson City. Gloria. I think they got your number. Woo! I think they got the alias that you've been living under. And you really don't remember. Is it something that they said? Or the voices in your head calling Gloria? Woo! Is it really playing still? I can't even hear. Woo, Gloria! All right, Gloria. All right. All right, Gloria. Woo! Second verse, oh, there's a second verse. I can't hear it. Will you meet him on the main line? Or will you catch him on the rebound? Will you marry for the money? Take a lover in the afternoon? Feel your innocence slipping away? Don't believe it's coming back soon? And you really don't remember? Was it something that he said? All the voices in your head? That he said? All the voices in your head calling Gloria? All right. Woo! All right.
Third verse.
All right. It's still going. All right. Oh, it's over. All right, Mr. Bowman.
I'll let you put this back. Somebody might need the mic back.
All right. So with that, where were we? So in case you forgot, it's Let's Go Blues Day in Jefferson City, and we are very proud of the Blues, and something to cheer on and celebrate, so we are all wearing our Blues today. Congratulations, yes.
Also, I had a thing day competition with the city town administrator in Rutland, Massachusetts, and I had to clarify several times that we had the Blues, but at the very last game, I think it got clarified. So we won that one.
You better believe it. And not to...
Michael Nicholson.
Not to be whatever, we are gonna send them a copy, a signed copy, where we all, all the council members sign it, of Let's Go Blues Days, so we're gonna just be mailing that up to your fellow city administrator.
I'm sure they'll have Let's Go Blues Day in Massachusetts as well.
We expect that they will. Yes, they will. All right, congratulations again. Let's Go Blues, we love our Blues. And with that, we are going to introduce, unless they've all left the building, our city interns for the summer of 2019. Mrs. Stroke is gonna bring the crew, and that is a requirement for them to have sung and danced, I hope they did during that song.
I gave them the option of singing a song or a 10-minute presentation. I think they're all doing 10-minute presentations, is that right?
Welcome.
I am very excited to be able to introduce to you all our five outstanding students who are all here working for us this summer as interns. They began their program May 29th, and they'll be here with us through July 24th. They're all working within the departments, within their field of study. Also, over the course of the summer, they're invited to a number of different meetings, they're invited to a leadership team meeting, obviously to the city council meeting tonight. They're also participating in the Chambers JC 101 internship program. Most Fridays, though, we see them rotating around together as a group through the various departments within the city, so that over the course of the summer, they get a good understanding of the entire municipal government. So we're very excited to have them here with us, and I'm going to let each of them introduce themselves and let you know what department they're working in and what school they're from.
Hi, I'm Ashley Rehagen. I am with the Jefferson City Police Department, and I go to Benedictine College.
Hi, I'm Jensen Peale. I'm with Human Resources, and I go to Mizzou.
My name's Garrison Castor. I go to Missouri State in Springfield, and I'm with the IT Department.
Go Bears.
My name's Corey Stroke. I go to State Tech, and I'm with the Engineering Department.
My name's Mariah Best, and I attend the University of Missouri, and I'm with the Parks and Rec Department.
We are so glad to have all of you here. You're a great help to the city, and I know something, it's an experience that you all will learn from, but even more than that, we will learn from you, and we look forward to having you here, and we really take pride in working together with our interns, and it's a wonderful opportunity for us and for you, and we're just really thrilled to have you here. So does council have any comments? Mr. Councilman Mahalovich?
Are you all from Jefferson City or the area?
I'm not. I'm the only one that's not.
State of Missouri?
Great. Well, we're thrilled to have you, and if you would all like to come forward, and council will come back here and we'll get a group picture together. All right, item C, I'm sorry, item D, we have Mid-Missouri Disaster Relief Radio-Thon, and we have some representatives here. We'd like to welcome them to the podium, or Mr. Austin Peterson we have, and that date is June 21st, so he's gonna give us an update. Welcome.
Welcome. Thanks for having me, I appreciate it. And thanks so much for welcoming to your community. I've been here for a couple of months now, and I'm really loving it here, and feel like I'm fitting in, so I'm grateful to be here, and it's certainly been difficult getting to know the lay of the land. It's a tricky city to do a radio show from, in the morning show, the 6:00 to 9:00 AM show, but we've been talking about how to catch catfish in blue holes, how the river's starting to go down, and telling them how not to get attacked by bears, and then all of, and today's topic, we were talking about what is your greatest fear? And I said alligators, because I've always been scared of those monster-looking things, but you know, now I think my greatest fear is having to sing and dance in front of the city council.
We forgot to give you the requirements.
Yes, I appreciate that. But you know, what I didn't reveal on the show this morning is, one of my greatest fears has always been that if something bad ever happened to me, that there wouldn't be anybody there to help. And you know, my dad is kind of one of my only family members, my mom passed when I was young, and I think if he was gone, you know, what would I do? Would anybody help if I got hit in the storm? Because I was there that morning to go and record everything for the show and do interviews and see the city from a way that not a lot of people get to see. And when Jeremy, my program manager, came up to me and said, "Hey, Austin, we should do a Radio-Thon," I said, "Yeah, absolutely, let's do it." We got some sponsors together, and we're raising money, and it's all going the United Way. Everybody says, "Where's the money going?" Well, it's going the United Way. It doesn't go to us. But good news for you guys is that you're gonna get a double dose of me and John Marsh on Friday, so it'll be going from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We teamed up with the Capital Regional Medical Center, GFI Digital, and a lot of other community leaders for the KWOS Mid-Missouri Disaster Relief Radio-Thon. It's gonna be this Friday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, so all I ask is that you listen, invite your friends to listen and participate. We'll try and raise some money for storm victims, and there certainly are some people out there who are still hurting, and I know the city council's been doing your best to help those people, which we're all very grateful for, and thanks so much for your time today, and please listen to the show. It's your boy AP. Enjoy. Have a good one.
Well, thank you, AP. Thank you, Austin, and we're glad to have you. Welcome again to Jefferson City, and we will look forward to the Disaster Relief Radio-Thon. We will be sure to spread the word, and please thank all of your sponsors that are generously allowing that to happen. Does council have any questions at this point? So, okay, we will tune in. Some of us, I know, will be calling in, and what we would like is all of us to be donating, so let's all pitch into that, see if we can get 100% council participation in that. Thank you. Item five, public hearings, there's none. Item six, appointments by the mayor, Mrs. Stroke.
Thank you, Mayor. We have appointments to three different boards. The first one is Jim Crabtree to the Board of Adjustment. The second is Roger Schwartz, Mike Cross, Carl Staub, and Jack Attarberry to Transportation and Traffic Commission. And the third is Michael Rhino, Hal Dooley, and Bob Pretty to the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thanks again for those volunteers, we appreciate it. Item seven, we have a very special presentation at this time. Item A is Missouri Task Force One members tornado relief efforts, and Chief Schofield will give us an overview.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I would ask that the task force leaders come join me at the podium from Missouri Task Force One. We'll also have a slideshow that's gonna be kind of cycling as we talk with some different background information and some photographs. So just to provide a bit of background, Missouri Task Force One is one of only 28 federal urban search and rescue task forces that falls under the umbrella of the Department of Homeland Security. Federalized in 1997, we are very fortunate to have one here in central Missouri, based out of Boone County Fire District. The Jeff City Fire Department has been a supporting agency for the task force for almost 20 years, and currently six JCFD members serve in various roles with Missouri Task Force One. The extensive training and experience that firefighters are able to receive through the task force is truly extraordinary. The task force is more than just an all-hazard force multiplier for a fire department, they bring a tremendous amount of dedicated expertise and technical resources to a community in crisis. The task force is comprised of over 18 different specialized positions, including physicians, structural engineers, heavy equipment operators, hazardous materials specialists, and of course, as you've heard tonight, both live and canine cadaver teams. This, in addition to the highly-trained fire personnel from around the state, make up the remainder of the team. The task force maintains an equipment cache of 17,000 different pieces of equipment, weighing more than 76,000 pounds. Fast forward to early morning hours of May 23rd, an advanced team of three personnel arrived in Jeff City within an hour of our request channeled through the State Emergency Management Agency. Ultimately, 33 task force members responded throughout the night, and dozens more offered to assist if needed. With help from Missouri Task Force One, the Jefferson City Police Department, and Ambrun UE, our fire department sort teams completed all initial, primary, and secondary searches in less than 18 hours after the tornado touched down. We did this safely, and it was only possible because we had practiced this type of action countless times in a variety of training sessions, various exercises, and in over 60 real-world deployments of task force personnel throughout the country in the last 22 years. The night of the tornado teams were unified, they were mission-focused, they had trained together, and we all spoke the same language, and we were very efficient and effective. So with that, I would turn the podium over to Chief Scott Olson, the sponsoring agency chief of Missouri Task Force One.
Thanks, Matt, and then thank you all for having us here this evening to recognize the members that not only deployed here to Jefferson City, but the 60 other members that deployed to our headquarters in Columbia in case additional help was needed that morning and into the next day. Typical task force, as Matt noted, is 70 personnel with 10 support persons. It's comprised, as Matt said, of a variety of different disciplines, men and women and canines, that come together from all over this state to help our neighbors in need. And that's kind of the point I want people to understand, is that people came from all over this state to Jefferson City to help. We had people not only from the Columbia-Jeff City area, but also members from the lake, from St. Louis, from Kansas City, and from the Springfield area deploy here to this city, and then several others from even other areas of the state come to our headquarters to stand by. It takes a lot of commitment for those individuals to commit to being a member of the task force, and in addition, it takes a lot of support from their family, and in this case, their employers. And so we thank them, and we thank their families and their employers, just as we thank you, the employers of the six members of Jefferson City Fire Department that are members of the task force now, that you allow to deploy to not only disasters within our own community, within our own state, but across this country. I'd like to introduce both the task force leaders that deployed to Jefferson City that night. Doug Westhoff was the primary task force leader. He was, I had talked to Matt probably 15 minutes after the tornado hit. I had talked to Doug a couple minutes after that, and he left home about 10 minutes after that and was down, was the first one down in Jefferson City within 45 minutes. Three other members of the task force also arrived soon thereafter, a planning team manager, hazardous materials specialist, and a structural engineer to do initial assessments. The other task force leader is Chuck Leek, who arrived later on with the remainder of the task force, and together with the 33 people that did respond, worked not only throughout the morning, but all day the next day to accomplish what Matt had stated. The other members of the task force, there's 15 other members of the task force that did respond that night that I would like to recognize, and I'd like to ask them to stand at this point in time, that stand behind us. We have Kurt Dulady, who's a rescue team manager, Cheryl Gladney, who was one of the planning team managers that responded first that night. We have Kathy Schultz and her dog, Maddie, who responded. Tim Dorsey, who's a rescue team manager. Clint Hunt, who's a rescue specialist. Troy Peterson, who's a search team manager. Jason Morzinnick is a technical information GIS specialist. Matthew Bullard is a communication specialist. Andy Bondur is one of the engineers that responded. Zach Grace, who...
Strope.
Thank you, Mayor. We have appointments to three different boards. The first one is Jim Crabtree to the Board of Adjustment. The second is Roger Schwartz, Mike Cross, Carl Staub, and Jack Aterberry to Transportation and Traffic Commission. And the third is Michael Rhino, Hal Dooley, and Bob Pretty to the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And thanks again for those volunteers. We appreciate it. Item seven, we have a very special presentation at this time. Item A is Missouri Task Force One members tornado relief efforts, and Chief Schofield will give us an overview.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I would ask that the Task Force leaders come join me at the podium from Missouri Task Force One. We'll also have a slideshow that's going to be kind of cycling as we talk with some different background information and some photographs. So just to provide a bit of background, Missouri Task Force One is one of only 28 federal urban search and rescue task forces that falls under the umbrella of the Department of Homeland Security. Federalized in 1997, we are very fortunate to have one here in central Missouri based out of Boone County Fire District. The Jeff City Fire Department has been a supporting agency for the Task Force for almost 20 years, and currently six JCFD members serve in various roles with Missouri Task Force One. The extensive training and experience that firefighters are able to receive through the Task Force is truly extraordinary. The Task Force is more than just an all-hazard force multiplier for a fire department. They bring a tremendous amount of dedicated expertise and technical resources to a community in crisis. The Task Force is comprised of over 18 different specialized positions, including physicians, structural engineers, heavy equipment operators, hazardous materials specialists, and of course, as you've heard tonight, both live and canine cadaver teams. This, in addition to the highly-trained fire personnel from around the state, make up the remainder of the team. The Task Force maintains an equipment cache of 17,000 different pieces of equipment weighing more than 76,000 pounds. Fast forward to early morning hours of May 23rd, an advanced team of three personnel arrived in Jeff City within an hour of our request channeled through the State Emergency Management Agency. Ultimately, 33 Task Force members responded throughout the night, and dozens more offered to assist if needed. With help from Missouri Task Force One, the Jefferson City Police Department, and Amber and UE, our fire department sort teams completed all initial primary and secondary searches in less than 18 hours after the tornado touched down. We did this safely, and it was only possible because we had practiced this type of action countless times in a variety of training sessions, various exercises, and in over 60 real-world deployments of Task Force personnel throughout the country in the last 22 years. The night of the tornado teams were unified. They were mission-focused. They had trained together, and we all spoke the same language, and we were very efficient and effective. So with that, I would turn the podium over to Chief Scott Olson, the sponsoring agency chief of Missouri Task Force One.
Thanks, Matt. And then thank you all for having us here this evening to recognize the members that not only deployed here to Jefferson City, but the 60 other members that deployed to our headquarters in Columbia in case additional help was needed that morning and into the next day. Typical Task Force, as Matt noted, is 70 personnel with 10 support persons. It's comprised, as Matt said, of a variety of different disciplines, men and women and canines, that come together from all over this state to help our neighbors in need. And that's kind of the point I want people to understand, is that people came from all over this state to Jefferson City to help. We had people not only from the Columbia-Jeff City area, but also members from the lake, from St. Louis, from Kansas City, and from the Springfield area deploy here to this city, and then several others from even other areas of the state come to our headquarters to stand by. It takes a lot of commitment for those individuals to commit to being a member of the Task Force, and in addition, it takes a lot of support from their family, and in this case, their employers. And so we thank them, and we thank their families and their employers, just as we thank you, the employers of the six members of Jefferson City Fire Department that are members of the Task Force now, that you allow to deploy to not only disasters within our own community, within our own state, but across this country. I'd like to introduce both the Task Force leaders that deployed to Jefferson City that night. Doug Westhoff was the primary Task Force leader. He was, I had talked to Matt probably 15 minutes after the tornado hit. I had talked to Doug a couple minutes after that, and he left home about 10 minutes after that and was down, was the first one down in Jefferson City within 45 minutes. Three other members of the Task Force also arrived soon thereafter, a planning team manager, hazardous materials specialist, and a structural engineer to do initial assessments. The other Task Force leader is Chuck Leek, who arrived later on with the remainder of the Task Force, and together with the 33 people that did respond, worked not only throughout the morning, but all day the next day to accomplish what Matt had stated. The other members of the Task Force, there's 15 other members of the Task Force that did respond that night that I would like to recognize, and I'd like to ask them to stand at this point in time, that stand behind us. We have Kurt Dulady, who's a rescue team manager. Cheryl Gladney, who was one of the planning team managers that responded first that night. We have Kathy Schultz and her dog Maddie, who responded. Tim Dorsey, who's a rescue team manager. Clint Hunt, who's a rescue specialist. Troy Peterson, who's a search team manager. Jason Morzinek is a technical information GIS specialist. Matthew Bullard is a communication specialist. Andy Bondur is one of the engineers that responded. Zach Grace, whom many of you may know as, has a more famous family member, I think, in the family. But Zach was actually down here and responded as part of the Task Force as a hazardous materials specialist. And Ella McGary and her dog Favor was a live fine dog. So those are just some of the people that responded to your community, just like the six members on your fire department that would respond to our community or some other community across the state or across the country. These people volunteer their time to train incessantly, to be prepared to respond to disasters at a moment's notice.
Well, we sincerely thank, sorry, but seriously, sincerely thank each and every one of you for the support that you gave us. Seeing you all in action is something I'll never forget, and our community is so fortunate and blessed to have all of you and your skills and your training. I know at the city government council level, training is something that we take very seriously, and to see it in action really says a lot. And the fact that you all have come from all around the state to help Jefferson City was incredible. I've always known, we had members on Task Force One. We hear when chief has been deployed and others to different situations, and I don't think I truly knew what it was like until now. So we thank you all. It takes a lot of, I guess, relying on your families and support in your own departments, and so we just really wanted you here tonight just to say thank you, and we appreciate it so much. And we had an amazing, incredible amount of support from so many public safety agencies from around the state, and we're just really, really fortunate, and the work you all did was just incredible. And thank you for taking the time to come here tonight. And does Council have anything to add here at the moment?
No.
Other than a standing ovation. We sincerely thank you all, and we've also enjoyed having the service animals here as well, and making themselves known has been wonderful. I would like to have a, invite everybody forward, and we'll get a picture of everyone with Council. And then I have a city coin to present to the Task Force here with a note. And again, we just really can't thank you enough. This doesn't even say thank you enough, but we surely appreciate each and every one of you. So if y'all would come forward, we'll get a picture.
Everybody look at me once. One, two, three, smile. Great.
Your public service.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your public service. Not a, like it would be personally, everything could make them feel good.
Yeah.
I'm really trained for that. I have no idea.
It's a very rigorous task.
Kathy did it. She had the agency's book, and so the next step is getting the dogs, and then getting them to go to the program itself.
Do they, you know, I would agree.
I handed it to you.
All right. What an incredible group, just outstanding. So following that, Item B, we are going to have a tornado update here under the presentation section. So Mr. Marash is going to give us an update from Public Works.
Thank you. I think I have a PowerPoint there. Flip on. It's up at 20:20. Only one screen. Okay. And good segue into this. So this is, obviously, we heard about the first responders there, and so then it kind of eventually turns into kind of a Public Works and building code enforcement-type situation. So we gave this similar presentation last Thursday at the Public Works and Planning Committee meeting, but just a quick update. Kind of four functions that we are going to talk about: debris removal, our public infrastructure that was impacted in city properties, and then our parking and transportation. And just another little plug for folks that not only, you know, we get people to help out on the first responder side, but also on the public works side. So that truck and equipment there, that's a City of Columbia dump truck, so we'd have half a dozen or more trucks from the City of Columbia with drivers, of course, and come down and help us haul debris. And the piece of equipment sitting behind there is from Martin Machinery. They called me up just a day or so after the event of the tornado, and indicated they would like to help us with the equipment, our needs, and we said, "Well, we asked for the biggest equipment need was," and a big piece of equipment there, and they donated that free of charge, that we could help load the trucks quicker that way. So that was a big help. And I'd also point out, Rob Kingsbury was sitting here. There he is. Yeah, so Farmer Holding Company, of course, they helped out by donating some space out at the mall, not only for kind of the, kind of the center of, can't think of the name right now, United Way Help Center, but also helping state employees park there, allowing them to park there. And then also, they sent some trucks and equipment from their paving company over one day or two, or a couple days, to help us with equipment. So that was very, very good of them to do. And also, so there's other people, many people volunteering in the effort and helping out, so that we're, all that is much appreciated. And I'll miss some people that helped, I'm sure. Can't name them all, but we'll need to sit down and think about that. So moving on, just real quick, debris removal. We put out a deadline of yesterday, in fact, June 16th, to have your items out by the curb that we could pick up, and it's kind of two categories: vegetation and non-vegetative debris. And so, you know, we spent the last three weeks or so getting the vegetation. We started that right away the day after. And the picture's a site out by the landfill on a quarry property, and Twee House Excavating is operating this site for us. Anyone can take their material out there, but of course, we've hauled over 2,000 dump truck loads. This is a, that number's probably a week or two old, so it's more than that now. But a lot of debris out there. You can see it's a huge pile. Then non-vegetative-type stuff, wind-blown stuff, building products, you know, maybe some mixed vegetation, already 400 tons hauled out to the landfill. So that's, that's what the crews have been working on now that our deadline has come. So a lot of material got out to the curb again. So we'll be working, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll be coming to the end of that process, and we just kind of have to see how that goes and what's out there. Of course, public infrastructure, multiple traffic signals, street lights, crosswalks, school crosswalks, tons of street signs, street poles, all that kind of stuff that you don't, may not think about. We're down, missing, who knows where they went, but you know, that will all have to be replaced and updated. So another big task that the same crews are clearing the vegetation. So we've shifted all our crews into this vegetation and debris removal. And so, you know, other things are being neglected, potholes, and I've gotten calls about those, and, you know, stormwater projects, all the above. So all the crews had to be shifted to this effort. And oh, by the way, we also have a flood we're getting ready to clean up with after here shortly, as the waters go down. But so we're hopeful to get back, and we've kind of, we've kind of started back at that a little bit, but all that other stuff is important too, as well. So. City property, we had a bunch of vehicles in the back lot here, inspection vehicles, police vehicles, all kinds of vehicles, a lot of broken windows. So we, you know, big run on replacing windows, and several pieces of equipment, I think over 53 were damaged, it says. Of course, then City Hall had some minor damage. Airport, that's the photo of the airport terminal, floodwater up to the door handle, about four feet in there. So yet to see what that involves. And I also mentioned our substantial damage problems with SEMA and FEMA. When these structures get flooded, you have to do a big evaluation. So that's going to take some engineering time to determine, can they be fixed back to their original condition? If exceeds 50% of the value, that structure then has to come into compliance. So another little wrinkle we have to work on there, just more, more things to do there. So more to come on that. Of course, the tower, the maintenance buildings, and the terminal were all flooded out. And so, but that substantial damage thing also affects private property owners as well. So stop me if you have a question. I'm just kind of going through this pretty quick. Parking, transportation, obviously, many roadways were closed. We highlighted some of them here in the downtown area in red, but most are now open. I think Walnut Street is still closed, which is the street directly adjacent to Ware's Creek, just south of the highway. Most of the parking lots are now back open, or the majority of the parking lots are open. Maybe a little water in some of them still, but they're now open. Hence, the state shuttle, we jumped in and worked with the state to shuttle in the folks from the state that use these parking lots. So that is now stopped as well. So about three weeks of shuttle service there, and so we're glad to see that back in order. So a little less crowded downtown on the streets, parking, those kind of things. So kind of coming to the end of that phase. But again, going to the, we're getting ready to ramp up on flood items. We know we have some road damage over there, and a lot of cleaning yet to do. So just a quick summary. Glad to answer. Any questions?
Thank you for that summary, Mr. Marash, and the response by the Public Works Department has just been amazing. They were instantly out, working on clearing the roads and debris's, and just many, many other tasks, and really fortunate to have all of their work, and really thankful for all of our city departments. It was all hands on deck, no matter what department anyone was in. They were really all in action. But really appreciate Public Works and what you all have done in your department. Was there questions, Mr., or Councilman Mahalovich?
I think we do give a great deal of credit to our public safety officials, but Public Works deserves a great deal of our gratitude for being nearly the first people in and last people to leave. So express our appreciation to that group as well.
Thank you. I'll pass it on.
Also, I know we're nearing the end of a airport master plan, and it, I think it's going to call for relocation of the control tower. Is there any reason why we couldn't, are we waiting for federal funding? Is it out of step with, with, I've been over in that control tower, and it is a, it needs to go down one of these days.
Well, yeah, you bring up a good point, and really, we're just now getting back into the buildings. I think there was still a few inches of water yet today, and some of them, you know, that's behind a levee, so it takes longer to drain out. But yes, all the above is on the table, especially when we look at the amount of damage. Is there any funding assistance available for these public buildings, just like other infrastructures? That's another big aspect. We have a different group working on that, looking into those issues. Some of our engineers are looking into that. But yeah, a lot more to come on our actual structures. One of our, as far as the airport goes, and one of the main things is to get it back open, clean the runway. It would be a daytime-type operation. We know our lighting is damaged more than likely, so that will take longer to do. But once we can get our runway visible and our taxiways, then we can, we can resume those operations, but yet much to do still at the airport.
Any other questions for Mr. Marash? Okay. Thanks for the update. And I know we have Mr. Rob Kingsbury here. Would you just come up to the podium just for a quick second? And I'm not sure exactly which item you're on here for, but since you're here, I want to just take a, I want to take a quick moment to thank you, because like Mr. Marash said, since you're here, we can thank you in person. You all really reached out just to ask what can we do to help, and it's evident with the shuttle and allowing the state to partner with the mall was really nice, when they needed the parking, that you all absolutely accommodated in any way you could. I know on a personal note, you've also helped other businesses that needed things, and you've, you all have really reached out, and watching the business community help each other has really been great. So thank you.
That's very kind of you. I hadn't anticipated, been recognized. I mean, we certainly are doing nothing more than really anyone else in our community, just trying to come together and help each other. It's been a pretty challenging time. So I was pretty struck by folks who are really doing the heavy lifting, and so they're heroes, and we're just pleased to be able to help any way that we can. So.
Well, we appreciate it. It was noticed, and that means a lot. So thank you very much.
Okay, sure.
Thank you. All right. And while we're doing some recognitions, I also appreciate, I know we have Mrs. Donna Dietz here from Historic City of Jefferson, and as we know from the last meeting, they were instrumental in working to help us with encouraging building permit fees, and helping to really encourage revitalization and regrowth and development in Jefferson City. So we want to thank you as well, and your organization too, Historic City of Jefferson. And then while we're talking about kind of a tornado update, I'll give also a brief update on some things we've been working on. Right now, we are still doing, doing the recovery process, kind of the short-term recovery. There's a committee that's been meeting and working on some of these short-term needs, and the United Way's been hosting this group. And out of the group, there's been, in the last week, there were a couple of almost like mini marks where if people couldn't get to the mark, they were able to get to a couple of locations, and one of them was Quinn Chapel last week, and they had a lot of resources, whether it was housing, transportation, donations, whatever the, whatever people needed. So I think that went very well, and there's still a lot of the short-term recovery that is happening and continues to happen. And then we know that the next step will be long-term recovery. But before I get into long-term, I did want to mention that I've been getting a few questions that what if people missed the mark? What if they have not been able to connect with resources? So, you know, if they have not already registered with the 211 phone number, that's what we're encouraging them to do first, is call 211 and register. Or, but if they, if they've already done that, if they've already registered with 211 or gone to the mark, but they still have additional questions or needs, then we can refer them to Catholic Charities, which is doing disaster case management. I'm going to give you their number. It's 573-635-7719. So Catholic Charities is part of the group, and they're doing the case management, and they are doing outreach and scheduling appointments. So if you know people that have, have not been able to connect, then that is a number that can help them, will help them with the distribution center and whatever their needs are. They're working on transitional housing, many, many things that are happening right now. So just want to make sure that we have the resources in case we're asked, where people can get assistance if they haven't yet. And then, starting to touch on the long-term recovery, which will be the next step, and I'll give you a summary, recognizing there are two types of long-term recovery. One is for individuals and families, and the other for communities. So the individual and families will, we are having meetings and continuing to work with the short-term recovery group, and that will transition into the long-term recovery. So for the individuals and families, that can consist of creating plans with families through disaster care management to move them through the recovery process. The goal is to return them to as close to pre-disaster as possible. And for Jefferson City and Cole County, this will be supported through the Long-Term Recovery Committee, which is led by the United Way of Central Missouri, and encompasses all of the organizations that are helping. The second part, the community long-term recovery, is the Community Resilience and Recovery. Creates a plan for the whole community to recover and build resilience, including businesses, organizations, individuals, and more. The goal is to equip leaders to make informed strategic decisions, and Jefferson City and Cole County will consider creating a community resiliency recovery leadership type of a team. So these are all things that are, that are in the works, but this is typically how a long-term recovery process looks, some of those organizations. So wanted to touch on that briefly and give a quick summary of kind of where we are with, with that and where we're going. So we have a lot ahead of us, and certainly it's a process that will take quite a while, but I know that we are committed as a city, as a council, in the long haul, to, to work to, to get our community through, and we'll continue to remain strong. So thankful to our city departments and all the work that's been done. I also want to take a moment and thank our I also want to take a moment and thank our council members that have been out and about and working as hard as they can to do whatever can be done, and we really do appreciate it. Do any council members have anything they'd like to add on the subject of recovery at this time? Well, keep up the good work. Like I said, it's a lot of work ahead of us, but again, we appreciate it. Councilman Mahalovich?
I'm told that they're going to need some volunteers to offload two tractor-trailer units of supplies, and I think you're directed to go to the volunteer and put your name down on the list, and then you'll be contacted. I believe the News Tribune continues to add, put in there daily, how to give, how to volunteer, and so they're needing help to offload these materials for people this week. They don't know when they're coming in, but it's coming in.
Okay. So and if they, volunteers can register online at unitedwaycemo centralmissouri.org, or they can call the 211 and get registered as a volunteer, and that way, when they have a call for volunteers, they can have that database of who to call. And then the number I gave out to Councilman, if you find that there's any needs, I know that they can also connect, I'm sure, with resources. So appreciate it again. All right. Item eight, announcements by Mayor, Council, and Staff. Are there any committee announcements at this time? Any upcoming meetings, Councilman Mahalovich?
We have a Finance Committee meeting this Thursday at 7:30 across the hall.
Okay. And something to keep in mind, we will soon start budget meetings, and I believe those have been sent out as well for calendar invites here soon. So Mrs. Miller says, shaking her head, yes, that has been gone out. So make sure that you all have those on your calendar as well. And then you can check out the full schedule at JeffersonCityMo.gov. And for my announcements, I did want to announce that last week, there was the unveiling of the USS Missouri stamp, which is a special limited edition stamp, and we're very proud to have the USS Missouri battleship recognized on a stamp. So if you haven't gotten one, be sure to get to the post office and get a sheet so we can show our pride for USS Missouri. They had a nice ceremony at the Capitol, and they had a ceremony actually on the battleship, which would have been really cool to be part of that, too. Item B, the Missouri bicentennial moment, is to save the date, Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. I know it sounds like a long way away, but that is the date of the bicentennial that we are anticipating to have an event here in Jefferson City, likely at the Missouri State Capitol, to celebrate Missouri's bicentennial. So again, Tuesday, August 10th, 2021. Are there any other council announcements at this time? Councilman Kimna?
Yeah, just Springfield Day at the ballpark, Cole County Day. It was postponed this last Saturday. They just rescheduled it to August 10th.
Okay. Thank you for that update. And that is the county's United Way fundraising project. So if anyone's interested, let Councilman Kimna know, and he can connect you with getting down there. Item nine, Lincoln University student update. Ms. Wanjaro?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council as a whole. Just my announcement, we were pleased and glad to announce that the Board of Curators, who had their meeting on this Thursday, June 13th, they extended Dr. Wilfolk's contract to 2024. And so she is going to be here for a very long time, which I'm really pleased about. Thank you.
Thank you for that update. Item 10, presentations from the gallery on specific bills, and, okay. And we have three people signed up. We have Kelly Dillon and, I can't make out, is, oh, Charlie's mom, it says. Is that right? I'm trying to read the handwriting.
Somebody that's been assigned up.
Oh, that's right. Okay. I think these are all for the earlier item. So I don't believe we have anyone signed up then in the group. Okay. I think that was for the Employee of the Month celebration. All right. Item 11, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, bills introduced 2019-19.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Bartlett &amp; West in the amount of $152,566 for the Clark Avenue and Dunkland Street intersection projects.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. As the clerk indicated, this is a signed contract with Bartlett &amp; West for a roundabout design of Clark and Dunkland. The project was listed in the current sales tax as a specific project, and the contract's just for just over 152,000 for the design portion of this contract. The actual ride-away would start soon after our design gets going on, and then, of course, construction, we feel like the funds would be accumulated by 2022. So it's a city-county project within the sales tax. And again, like I indicated, it was a listed project, and if anyone were to have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer those. I think we've had some questions or comments to some of the council about the project. I'd be glad to field those if you have any specific ones.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Hesse?
Matt, could you spell out a little bit more on that timeline if this is approved, or it'll be approved in two weeks? Like, when you anticipate ride-away acquisition, what that looks like? I know 2022 is project date when funds accumulate, but some of my calls have been about just impacted properties and what that process looks like.
Yeah, so what happens is we get into the design, and we get to preliminary design and hold a public meeting after that. And so that's usually about six months in or so. We hold a meeting, notify the property owners of kind of what that looks like, so we're more pinned down on what the property acquisition looks like. That can start then pretty immediately after that, especially with willing property owners. They get some influence then on the design before it's finalized. For example, there's one we anticipate being a total take. The, used to be a, I believe, a grocery store, Mr. Schreiber told me at one point in time. But anyway, right now, it's a church is renting that building. So they'll have some time to work with us to figure that out. There's some impacts to a gas station across the street. Again, working on those driveways and access through this process, all through the process.
And a good point, Councilman Hesse, and I know that you've been in communication with the, some representatives from the church initially, so are you, as long as you continue to maintain that?
Certainly. We're always available if they have any questions. Like I said, the process, the design part of it just is getting started. This came about, just for a little background maybe, due to the interchange study that MoDOT had conducted several years ago, talking about potential improvements there. So as when the city project cropped up, we did a extensive traffic study of that corridor to see what intersection type could fit with their potential improvements in the future.
Councilman Mahalovich?
I would think, to add further context, is we debated a few years ago the closure of Chestnut on LU campus to pedestrian only, and that had a lot of concern about that, the public that would have been impacted more or less in that neighborhood. And they nearly demanded that if you're going to close Chestnut, you must improve this corridor here. So I don't want to tie the two projects necessarily together, but that was the discussion when we were debating whether to close Chestnut. Also, I know this is a joint city-county project for the total amount, but is, are they picking up half the engineering?
Yeah, how we do that, there's many city-county projects ongoing all the time, and so we kind of even our money out as we go. Say, I think it's, as far as this goes, we'll fund that. They funded some other items, such as some railroad construction out on the east end. And so we're evening that, evening up the money kind of as we go, just depending on what the project is. And when we bid a project, of course, that's a big dollar amount typically, and so that helps us get even back out if one gets ahead of the other.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any question, other comments? Okay, 2019-20.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with SAC Construction LLC in the amount of $1,727,388 for the sewer main rehabilitation 2019 project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Again, another construction contract, this time with SAC. As clerk indicated, a little over $1.7 million contract. It's about 1.1 million of that will line sanitary sewer pipes, the other 600,000 will be lining stormwater pipes. Yep, answer any questions?
Any questions? Okay. 2019-21.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Visi Sewer of Missouri LLC in the amount of $168,900 for the sewer main rehabilitation 2019 project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Another very exciting project about lining sewers. This one is lining manholes, so kind of a component of the other contract, but we chose a different company, got a little lower price on the actual manhole linings from this company, it's Visi Sewer, for about $170,000.
Any questions? All right. 2019-22.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a first amendment to tax increment financing contract by and between the City of Jefferson City, Missouri, and Capitol Mall JCLLC.
And that is, Mr. Moleman?
Thank you. This bill amends the tax increment financing agreement between the City of Jefferson and Capitol Mall JCLLC. This is the TIF agreement that went in place in 2015 that accommodated the establishment of the Capitol Mall Tax Increment Financing Plan, and also the Capitol Mall Community Improvement District. These changes are necessary in order to allow the City of Jefferson Industrial Development Authority to issue bonds. The revenue that would support the bonds would come from the TIF revenues and CID revenues generated by the Capitol Mall. TIF and CID, the bonds proceeds would be used by the developer to develop the existing Capitol Mall TIF plan and related CID improvements. The development agreement, the TIF agreement needs to be amended because while the issuance of bonds were contemplated, when the TIF and CID were initiated back in 2015, these provisions were identified by the city's Special Economic Development Council and also by its bond council as needing amendment to accommodate the bonds. This ordinance does not issue the bonds. The issuer of the bonds will be the City of Jefferson Industrial Development Authority. There will be related ordinances that will need to be executed by the city council or approved by the city council to allow for the actual issuance of the bonds. Those will appear later in July. So what this does is amends the TIF contract to allow the issuance of bonds by the industrial development authority. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Any questions? Councilman Mahalovich?
This doesn't change any liability upon the city, right? This is still on the owner?
Correct. So the bonds that are being contemplated are known as non-recourse bonds. So the sole revenue sources that will be available to pay the bonds and pay back the bondholders are the revenues generated by the TIF and CID. So if those revenues are not, for whatever reason, sufficient to pay back the bond, the bondholders have no ability to seek recourse either from the City of Jefferson or from the Industrial Development Authority. And this does not increase the TIF amount at all. Essentially, what it does, it takes revenue that was going to be distributed out of the TIF and CID in the future and essentially frontloads it so that more projects can be undertaken sooner.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. 2019-23.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the nuisance code pertaining to the maximum permitted sound levels in public parks to allow better enforcement of noise level violations within the parks.
Mr. Gates?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this amendment to the current noise ordinance would include parks. The current ordinance excludes parks, so we're just requesting that parks come along with the current noise ordinance. The amendment will allow better enforcement of the sound levels within the parks, and any variations can be presented to the director of the Parks and Recreation Department for any variance or permitting outside of the normal park hours.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. 2019-24.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Mr. Gates?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This request is for $441,990 of supplemental appropriation from the Park Fund to fund Phase II, the design and construction of Riverside and McLung Park. Both parks are the next priorities for the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the commission did vote and approve a contract with the Architects Alliance for these services at their meeting last Tuesday.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Kimna?
I'd like to request to suspend the rules for this bill, please.
Okay. And seeing no objections, we will suspend the rules. And we will have, we will take up 2019-24. So Mrs. Donaldson will read it.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2018-2019 budget of the City of Jefferson, Missouri by appropriating additional funds within the Park Fund.
Further questions or deliberation? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 13, bills pending 2019-18.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a sanitary sewer easement over and between properties addressed as 1720 and 1736 Veth Drive in the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you, Mayor. As clerk indicated, vacating a sanitary sewer easement over a Veth Drive, it's basically a property cleanup issue that was discovered as the owners are seeking to develop that property.
Any questions or deliberation? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item 14, nothing on the informal calendar. Item 15, no resolutions. Item 16, there's no presentations. Item 17, any council and staff discussion of presentation topics? Item 18, new business. It's our annual charter review, and Ryan is going to give us a very, very brief review.
So in all seriousness, the city has been engaged in charter review for the last couple of years, and so I think that this current council has a familiarity with charter that is not typical of other councils, I may say. And so I am going to be brief with some of the things, but we're going to go through the charter, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, just to kind of touch on some of the highlights that are contained in the charter and be available for questions if any come up as we go through these. So first of all, and Jessica, if you could kind of keep up with me, I'm going to go through these pretty fast. Thanks. So essentially, the charter was first contemplated in 1985 when there was an election to select a charter commission that was approved in February of 1985. And over the next year, the commission developed the charter. The charter was then approved essentially one year later on February 7th, 1986 by a vote of essentially 5,500 to 1,000. Article I establishes the name. The name of the city is the City of Jefferson. And so if anyone ever asks you the question, what is the actual name of the city? It is the City of Jefferson. That is established in our charter. The powers, so essentially, Article II of the charter reserves to the city's all powers that are available to charter cities. Charters are authorized by the Constitution of Missouri and allow cities to have all powers that the state could give them unless they are limited by their own charter or if the legislature explicitly excludes those powers. Couple of notes on charter powers from case law. Case law says that charter powers are plenary, but the city cannot permit what the statute prohibits or prohibit what the statute permits. That's our general guideline of determining whether or not we are in conflict with state statute. And then also, another note, the city can utilize any powers contained in statutes
more than a thousand but less than ten thousand, very baroque descriptions of the cities. Even though the City of Jefferson and any other charter city does not fit within that description, charter cities are allowed to use those powers granted in those statutes. Courts say the charter powers are liberally construed, so when a court is looking at whether or not a charter city has a particular power, it's going to construe those powers to allow them to have it any way they can. Moving on to Article three, the council. The power of the city is vested in the city council unless it is specifically prescribed in the charter or by the council itself. The composition, of course, is ten members who have to be at least twenty-one years old, a resident of the city for a year, and a resident of their ward for six months and not in arrears to the city. A change in two thousand and nineteen was to term limits. Council members now may serve up to four consecutive terms. After four consecutive terms, two years must pass before a council member is eligible to serve again, and that is unlimited. So in theory, a person could serve four consecutive terms, take two years off, serve another four consecutive terms, take another two years off, then serve another four consecutive terms, you know, until they're no longer able to do that. The council decides to pay for council members, but that cannot be changed in the middle of a term. Those only go into effect once a new council is elected, and the president pro temp is selected by the council. And that president pro temp serves as mayor in the event of the absence of the mayor. Moving on to prohibitions on the council. The council cannot direct or request the hiring and firing of any person below a department head, but the charter does say that council members can recommend below department head level. Also, another prohibition, charter says that council members cannot interfere with the administration of the city. That means you cannot interfere with conduct of any department or duties of employees or give orders to employees. Charter provides an exception that says that council members can pass long complaints or ask questions of city employees. In vacancies in the council, vacancies can be created in many ways. One of those ways is removal, and removal is for cause. Cause is listed there in the PowerPoint there. We won't go through those unless there's any questions. However, vacancies are filled by a majority vote. And then it's also important to note that removal is not automatic, and it requires a two-thirds vote of the city council to remove a council member. And the council is a judge of qualifications. So in making the decision to remove a council member, the council itself serves as the judge as to whether or not those criteria for removal have been met. Moving on, section three point eight specifies the duties of the city clerk. City clerk is an employee of the city council. The clerk is the only employee that is required by charter to live in the city limits. Section three point nine investigations provide that the city council can investigate the affairs of the city. This includes the power to subpoena documents and witnesses. And then finally, section three point ten provides that the city council must provide an annual audit. This is actually interesting to me. This is the only funds that the city is required to expend by charter. Every single year, the city must, by charter, hire an independent firm to conduct an audit. Moving on to legislative procedures in section three point eleven, the council meets, determine rules and votes. It takes a vote of six members to pass an ordinance or a resolution, and ordinances require three readings. The first reading is when the clerk reads the title the first time, second is upon distribution of the ordinance in writing to the council, and third reading is when the clerk reads the title before the final vote. The charter does provide that ninety-six hours must pass between first reading and final passage. As we've seen here tonight, the rule can be suspended by a request of one council member. That's generally the bill sponsor, but that's not required by the city council. But a request for suspension can be blocked by objections made by two council members. It's important to note that the public is guaranteed a right to be heard by the council on all ordinances. It also provides a right for the bill sponsor to place any bill on the informal calendar. Once a bill is placed on the informal calendar, that bill is on the city council agenda under the informal calendar for three meetings. If no action is taken on those bills, in those three meetings, it will be dropped from the city council's agenda, and the whole process must start over. Ordinances are effective immediately unless otherwise provided in the ordinance, and the mayor can veto ordinances or resolutions. The veto can be overridden by a supermajority vote of seven council members. Article four, the mayor. Qualifications include thirty years old, resident of the city for two years, and also not be in arrears to the city. There was also two thousand and nineteen change to term limits. This provides that a mayor can serve two consecutive four-year terms. After two consecutive terms, former mayor must wait four years before he is eligible to serve again. Once again, salary is fixed by ordinance, and vacancies in office, there's procedures spelled out for the mayor, but essentially, the president pro temp serves until a special election can be conducted to replace the mayor. Moving on to powers of the mayor. Powers of the mayor are listed in four point four. We won't go through those unless there's any questions. Essentially, the mayor is the chief executive officer of the city. Article five covers the city administrator. City administrator is required, at no time does the charter allow that the city not have a city administrator. City administrator is appointed by the mayor and approved by a majority of the council. City administrator can be fired by the mayor and the council majority or without the mayor in a two-thirds vote of the council. Compensation is set by the same process of appointment, and qualifications for the city administrator are set by ordinance. Essentially, the city administrator is responsible for administration of city affairs, can appoint and remove all employees under the department head level. His duties include preparing an annual budget and a five-year capital improvement plan and submitting those documents to the mayor, and then generally supervising line and staff. There are some exceptions for parks and police where other entities take over some of those administrative duties. Article six, administrative organization and personnel system. Essentially, this requires that the city does have a plan of organization that is encapsulated through our departmental system. Charter provides that a person can be head of two departments, and also the city administrator can act as a department head too. And charter also requires that a personnel system is required to be adopted that currently exists in our Personnel Policy Manual. As I mentioned earlier, the charter creates two other administrative bodies that take over some of the administrative duties outlined in the charter. That is the Parks Board and the Police Board. For the parks system, the charter creates a parks department that's governed by the commission of nine members. It is important to remember that the parks department is still a city department, is still a part and parcel of the city government. Commission members are appointed by the mayor and approved by the council, and provides that commissioners can't be a member of the municipal government. I think a reasonable interpretation of that is that no employee or official of the city can serve on the parks commission except as a parks commissioner. They have the power to adopt bylaws, rules, and regulations for operation of the parks, and the commission is solely responsible for appointing a parks director. The commission exercises exclusive control over park fund money. This goes back to the city's history of having a parks property tax, which this provision of the charter copies language from that old statute. And the charter requires that money received for parks be put into the parked fund. The commission is the director of the department, and then they vest the powers of that directorship to the parks director that they are responsible for hiring. No one can spend money out of the parks fund without permission of the parks commission, and the commission vests limited spending authority to the parks director through the parks bylaws. There are some requirements of the parks department or the parks commission. They must provide an annual report to the council, and it must also submit its budget to be approved by the council as the parks sales tax, which constitutes a large portion of its revenues. The controlling statute of the sales tax says that the governing body must approve all appropriations of that sales tax and how it's spent. The other administrative board created by the charter is the Police Personnel Board. The police board sections require that a merit system be established for the police department. The personnel boards gives examinations of police candidates, certifies eligibles to the city administrator for appointment, and also serves as an appeal board for discipline of police officers. As a note, there used to be a fireman's pension fund, of course, that was abolished in two thousand and eighteen when all firefighters were moved to the loggers retirement system. Moving on to section six point five, the city councillor. City councillor is hired on recommendation by the mayor and six council members and can be fired, similar to the city administrator, by the recommendation of the mayor and six council members or by a two-thirds majority vote, seven council members. Qualifications for the city councillor includes license to practice law for three years and has various duties related to litigation, approving documents, and advising the council committee's city administrator and department heads. City prosecutor in section six point six is an elected prosecutor, elected by the voters of the city. Qualifications are that the city prosecutor be a licensed attorney, a resident of the city, and not be in arrears to the city. A two thousand and nineteen change in April added a removal provision. That provision provides that the city prosecutor can be removed by a four-fifths vote of the city council for cause, and procedures for removal are set by ordinance. Municipal court, six point seven, does require that a municipal court exist for the City of Jefferson, and the municipal judge is elected by the voters of the city. Article seven, financial procedures. Financial procedures include that the fiscal year is determined by the council. The budget must be in the form deemed by the mayor. The council must approve the budget, and there must be a public hearing before the budget is approved. The charter authorizes budget amendments, and if the council can't pass a new budget, the last year's budget is copied. The head of the finance department shall be designated fiscal officer of the city.
And the mahaladala's count, by the way.
Very, very valuable.
Two for one.
Moving on to nominations, elections. Elections are required by section eight point one. Of course, nominations. Candidates must declare their candidacy with the city clerk. The winner is whoever gets the most votes. Tie votes require a special election, and this section also establishes that there are five wards that are reestablished every ten years with the dicennial census. Just a note, that is coming up. So the twenty-twenty census, we will get that information in late twenty-twenty, early twenty-twenty-one, and we will have to do redistricting of the wards in the city. If anyone has never been through a redistricting, it is a lot of fun. It's a lot of technical information that goes along with that and lots of important decisions that have to be made. So that's going to be coming up sooner than we think. The wards must be compact, contiguous, and equal in population, as nearly impossible. The case law says that generally, there can't be more than a ten percent variance in between the population of any of the wards. Initiative petitions are authorized in article nine. Initiative petitions are direct actions by voters to establish new laws. The charter provides that initiative petition are not available for appropriation of money, taxes, or zoning issues. There's a procedure that goes along with that, which essentially requires twenty percent of the voters in the last mayoral election or four hundred, whichever is larger, to set forth those procedures. Moving on to referendum. Referendums are authorized to stop new laws from going into effect. Referendums are not available for appropriation of money, taxes, zoning issues, budget, capital program issues, or special tax bills. Also, a procedure that goes along with that, it's a little bit more demanding in that requires twenty-five percent of the last mayoral election to sign a petition, or five hundred, whichever is larger. If a referendum petition is successful, that ordinance, though approved by the city council, does not go into effect. So that is a power that is reserved to the people, to the voters of the City of Jefferson. Article X or Article ten addresses franchises. Public utility franchises require a public vote. We don't use this section very much anymore. State statutes have largely displaced municipal authority over public utilities, but cities still can require franchises from certain types of utility companies. Moving on to article eleven, this is a fairly simple article. This article authorizes all taxes which are authorized by law. Increases in taxes can only go into effect with a vote of the people under the Hancock Amendment to the Missouri Constitution, and the section also authorizes the city to tax and regulate all businesses which the state allows, the taxation and regulation thereof. So that is a broad reservation of rights to tax and regulate businesses. Article twelve, general provisions. There was a change to this article here in two thousand and nineteen, formerly known as personal conflicts, personal financial interests. The title of that section, twelve point two, was changed to conflicts of interest and extends the conflicts of interest provisions beyond financial conflicts to persons who are in the governing body of nonprofits and political subdivisions. Now, it's important to note that this does not prohibit a council member from serving on the board of a nonprofit or another political subdivision. It only requires that when business with that nonprofit or with that political subdivision comes before the city council or is involved at an employee level, these provisions apply to employees as well, that the members who have those conflicts not act on that business. And so it's not a prohibition on serving, it's a prohibition on acting when there is an actual conflict at hand. And so it's a case-by-case prohibition, not a blanket prohibition. Article twelve goes on to provide that people who are injured, that they believe by the city must give notice to the city before filing a suit, provides that the city will pay bonds that are required for officials, employees, provides a procedure for amending the charter. There are essentially two ways to amend the charter. Charter amendments can be submitted to the voters by a charter commission, which comes up with proposed charter changes without recommendation by the council, or the council itself can make recommendations and place on ballots directly for charter changes. And so our last iteration of charter changes came through that second means where the city council itself directly places proposed charter changes onto the ballot. Provides for work instruction, essentially provides gender neutrality, and then has a kind of quirky little provision regarding how time is calculated in the charter and also in the city ordinances, and says that when counting time for periods for less than thirty-one days, one must exclude the first day, all Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, and include the last day. So when something in the charter or the ordinances says something like fifteen days, you have to be careful, make sure that you are putting in and calculating for those excluded days. Finally, article fifteen regarding gambling prohibitions. The charter provides that casino-type gambling and riverboat gambling are prohibited within the city limits, and also provides that employees and officials cannot receive any payment, bonus, gift, or any form of compensation or consideration from a gambling company, and then further provides that official employees are not prohibited from gambling elsewhere. That is the city charter. I would be happy to answer any questions that you have on that, and I apologize if we went too fast.
Councilman Schreiber?
Thank you for taking the time to update. I appreciate it. There was one little typo in there. If you go back to Article 4, I think we run the universe around you there.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hesse?
It's not a question, but a comment. I know six, seven months ago, we sat here to debate some charter amendments, and we had a couple that, the larger package, that there was concerns about some pieces of that, but there was still some cleanup language from the charter committee's work that dealt with gender neutrality, capitalization of city, and certain things. We were a little pressed for time. My intent would be maybe in August or so to bring that package back and some favorable set of bills to the administration committee to start that process. That charter committee that met, gosh, a year ago, really poured a lot of time and energy into some of these things, and there was just one piece that, about the informal calendar and the debate stuff that drew a lot of attention, but there was still some really good stuff in there. So, forewarning to my colleagues, I'd like to at least bring a lot of that back just for some further conversation and see if there's some of those pieces that were fairly straightforward in nature, non-controversial, to get put on the ballot in April and get cleaned up in the charter, so.
And thank you, Councilman Hesse and Fitzwater, for co-chairing, leading the liaisons to that. Not cheering, but sitting on that. Good summary, that really was informative, Councilor Moleman. And any other questions? So I believe there will be a pop quiz for the interns tomorrow, maybe? Okay, item 19, is there a motion to approve the closed session minutes from the June 3rd, 2019 meeting?
Tell me.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Hensley?
Aye.
Hesse?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham? Motion passes. I do have a couple of things I forgot here under, I'm on item 20, unfinished business. I forgot to announce that the guns and hoses tournament is August 24th. It's a Saturday night, and it is a hockey tournament, so we have the police versus fire, guns and hoses, so, yeah, we might be playing Gloria there.
I think Dave Williams is the goalie.
Dave, are you playing in that?
No.
Oh, okay. I will be there, so they are taking sponsors, and it's for the organization that helps fallen officers. And I'm just trying.
How's the dental plan with the city if they're playing hockey?
They're going to do great. We're really looking forward to that, so August 24th. I did also want to mention there, at the two meetings in July, that Councilman Mahalovich, our pro temp, mayor pro temp, is going to be taking over for me, and I will be out of town on vacation, visiting a good friend of mine, so I will be gone the first one. And then the second one, we ended up planning a trip to Minchburg, Germany. A small group of us is going to our partnership city, so if any council members want to send along a note of best wishes, let me know, I'll take it over there. And then I hope that next year, in 2020, we'll be having the big city trip, so I hope that all of you would be interested in coming along on that trip. So we're going to go over, it's been several years since we've been, and so we're just trying to keep that, keep that partnership going, and so we're making just a small trip there. So it just happens that those are going to coincide with council meetings. I always try not to do that, but it just happened this time, so that will be the meetings in July. And, yes? Did we? I know that first one, July 1st, as of now, if anyone's not going to be here, please let Emily know. I think there are several absences just because of the July 4th holiday week, so if you're not going to be here, let her know, just to make sure we have a quorum. We don't want to make Rick have to deal with that. All right. So before we adjourn, I noticed we did not get a picture of all of us with the Let's Go Blues Days proclamation, so we're going to get a picture, and then we will adjourn. But anything else under unfinished business? Okay, so I know there's also several of you that have, we should probably just go on and adjourn and then take the pictures. That sound, so motion to adjourn, all in favor? Aye, okay. So we're adjourned, but before you go, every, all the, we have some city employees that